All right. We're here to call the City Council meeting for May the 7th to order it at 7:05. Our invocation will be led by Pastor Julian Lutz from the West Covina Hills Seven Day Adventist Church, and then the Pledge of Allegiance will be led by Councilwoman Lopez. Go, Pastor. All rise, please.
There she goes.
Let us pray. Precious Lord, thank you so much for the freedoms we enjoy in this country, for this democratic process, and the rule of the people. Lord, I pray that each item on the agenda will be considered with wisdom and logic and clear thinking. Lord, you are good to us. In your name, amen.
(Inaudible). Ready to begin?
(Inaudible) United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Councilman Castellanos.
Here.
Councilwoman Lopez Viado.
Present.
Councilmember Shoemaker.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Wu.
Yep.
Mayor Johnson.
Here. Mr. City Attorney, is there anything to report on our closed session?
Yes, there is. I apologize. I was blanked for a moment. So, the City Council unanimously authorized the City Manager to enter into and to execute a letter of intent with Starwood relating to the development of the mall project. That's all there is to report.
Thank you, Mr. City Manager. Any changes to the agenda? Okay. This time, we have some presentations to make. Thank you. We have a few presentations to give. The first one, I'd like to call forward Ms. Marissa Castro-Soviet-Radar. Did I pronounce that correctly or close to it?
Close.
I don't feel so bad. I always do that. Who will announce our recipient of the Edison Scholarship. Now, I'm going to hand her the mic and have you call down the recipient.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, City Council members, and welcome to the two new council members that I don't think I have. Actually, three. I know Letty from some other avenues, but welcome to both of you. And I know I had met you, but I am your Government Relations Manager for Edison, and I cover this area. And I cover this easterly portion of San Gabriel Valley. But today, I'm not here to talk about electricity, and I know further later on, you're talking about LEDs. But I'm here actually today not to let you know that Edison not only delivers electricity to you, but also we deliver some outstanding students. Edison Scholars is one of our programs that we have at Southern California Edison, Edison International. We actually offer scholarships to these wonderful students who promote this particular program in allowing them to go to four-year colleges. This particular student, who is actually a student at Edgewood High School, and the principal's here, and I will let her come up a little bit later to kind of describe the student, Carissa Castro, and no relation, I could have said, she's my niece, you know, but Carissa is a senior at Edgewood High School. So, our program has been around since 2006, and we have given almost $10 million to 640 students since 2006. Each year, we donate and contribute to the Edison Scholars, to the students, 30 scholars that we select, and each one will get $40,000. And that $40,000 will be spread of the four years that they are going to the selected university that they go to. And I'm sure that Ronnie will describe us to where she is going. I didn't know at that time when we awarded her the $40,000 where she was going, but I'm sure that she will enlighten us. So, Ronnie, can I ask you to come up? Ronnie Maddox is our principal at Edgewood High School. Ronnie?
Hello, everybody. It's with great pleasure that I introduce to you Carissa Castro. She is our international baccalaureate diploma program candidate, and she currently holds a 4.88 GPA right now. So, you can just imagine all the hard work she has put into that. So, not only is she has interest in art and science, she's very passionate about making sure and ensuring clean water is brought to everyone across the world. So, her passion project was clean water for everyone, and hence why she is now going to be attending in the fall University of California, San Diego, to study mechanical engineering. So, I would like to introduce to you Carissa Castro.
Okay. Believe it or not, she's shy. Really? Come on. You know what? Carissa, I would just like to say, I know it's not a $40,000 scholarship, but you know, for myself and our City Council and our city, we want to tell you how very proud we are of you. You're one of our own, Edgewood High School. You're one of our West Covina residents, and you know, we're very, very proud of you. And we want to thank you very, very much. I mean, 4.8, whoa. I thought I should go sit back down. But this is a certificate we would like to present to you. It's from the City of West Covina, Certificate of Recognition, Carissa Castro of Edgewood High School, receiving the 2019 Edison International Scholarship Award. And we want to thank you so very, very much for being as smart as you are. Now, this time, it's our National Fire Service Day. To honor our Fire Service Day on Saturday, May 11, 2019, and please call forward our Acting Fire Chief Mike Hamble. Please come forward.
Sir? Thank you. So, Fire Service Day. In honor of Fire Service Day, we'd like to cordially invite everyone here and watching to join us at Fire Station Number Two on May 11 from 10 to 2 at Station Two, which is 2441 Cortez Avenue. We've got a couple of slideshows here just to kind of showcase, you know, Fire Service Day in the department, but it's a nationally recognized day designated to focus attention on the many varied and technical professional services we provide. We're founded in 1951 in the City of West Covina as an all-risk fire department, which means that we go to all types of emergencies, from technical rescue to obviously the fire suppression to mudslides. We go up and down the state in all environments. These pictures are actually taken way, very far away from West Covina itself. They're taken, we have our firefighter of the year, Sean Wise, on the side there, and that's up at the Montecito fires this last summer. Mutual aid deployments is what I was just referencing, and we're available for all of those. We partner with the community. As you can see, we like to show off our public relations as much as we can, which is why we invite you all out, and we're always ready. So, come out and see us this Saturday. I'll be there. You can meet me, since I haven't met most of you in this capacity, so I'm ready and excited.
Thank you, sir. We do have a proclamation for that Fire Service Day, and what it says is whereas, 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 and now there are four. I'm not going to read it. No, I'm sorry. You know, we all know what they are, it's the same ones we give all day. But we want to thank you so very much. I'd like to present this to you, and thank you so very much. (Applause). Thank you, Chief. I knew they liked that. Next one's our National Police Week. We have our Acting Police Chief, Richard Bell. Please come forward.
Attention for you, sir.
Well, thank you. Have a couple of my officers come down and stand with me. I'd like to say good afternoon to the council and our members of our viewing audience. Each year, we recognize Police Week. I would like to recognize the service and the sacrifice of law enforcement officers nationwide, especially those officers who paid the ultimate sacrifice and lost their lives in the line of duty for the safety and the protection of others. This year alone, 37 officers have been killed in the line of duty. As the Acting Chief, I would like to thank all of our officers who serve this great community. On behalf of the men and women of the West Covina Police Department, I want to thank our community for your continued support. An honor, I'm sorry, it is an honor to serve this great community. This proclamation represents the entire law enforcement community, and we will never forget three of our very own fallen officers, Fred Hamm, Jay Jackson, and Ken Reedy. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. What I'd like to read here is, "On behalf of the entire City Council, I proclaim the week of May the 12th through the 18th, 2019, the National Police Week, in the City of West Covina, and call upon all citizens and organizations in West Covina to commemorate this week with appropriate observance recognizing law enforcement officers past and present, who by their faithful and loyal devotion to their responsibilities have rendered a dedicated service to their communities preserving the rights and security of all citizens." And I don't want my council to laugh at me, so I just wanted to give you this proclamation, Chief, for you and all your officers. It says, "On National Police Week." Let's see if it still works. Okay. Mike, please come forward. Our Superintendent. All right, Mike.
I didn't know I was speaking today. I apologize. This is National Public Works Week.
That's you.
Oh, I didn't know. Okay. Sorry for that. For those of you who don't know, we, at Public Works, we take care of our streets, traffic signals, sewers, trees, and overall just infrastructure here in the city. We have a pretty small crew here, but they are out working hard, trying to improve day-to-day operations here at the city. So, if you see the guys in an orange shirt, you're out there, please this month say hello to them, ask them questions, see how they're doing. Other than that, thank you, and we'll do our best to make sure that everything is operational for you.
Thank you, Mike. This proclamation says National Public Works Week, May 19 through the 25th, 2019. This is for you. Thank you, Mike. And our last one, proclamation we want to give out is from the Observance of Lupus Awareness Month. I would like to call forward Mrs. Janana, how do you pronounce your name? I'm sorry. Juana Meta. I know I got those right. Is she here? Oh, I'm sorry. Can I have Assistant City Manager to come forward? I've got to present it to somebody. I don't know if you can see anybody here, but we want to present this to you. You make sure you get it for.
I will take care of it.
Next, we shall open it up for all communications. If you haven't filled out your other card, please fill one out and give it to our Assistant City Clerk, and she will call you up and order you to receive them.
Thank you, Mayor. I have a handful of speaker cards, but prior to that, I also have an Agenda Item Position Slip with a statement that I'd like to read into the record regarding item 21 on the agenda. City Council members, city staff members, and audience, and members of the public watching the meeting, my name is Renee Chavez. I am a resident and registered voter in the City of West Covina. I am unable to be at your meeting as I am at a commencement event at USC for a doctoral candidate in social work. My comments are regarding Agenda Item 21. This amendment of duties and the change of name for the Audit Committee is of great concern to me and should be to residents and voters in West Covina. It appears that the City Council is discharging its primary duty of being our eyes and ears of the finances of the City of West Covina. Agenda Item 21, Attachment 2, describes most of the duties that are and should remain the responsibility of the City Council. In Agenda Item 21, Attachment 2, the duties 2 through 6, and most importantly, 9, the committee's final responsibility is to report to the City Council if it finds that published financial information is believed to be inaccurate, not timely, or if projections will result, I'm sorry, result in shortfalls in revenue, overdrafts in expenditures, or deficits caused by spending more than is received. As such, 1, the committee membership should be required to have documented experience in accounting with any combination of education and/or work experience to ensure the capability to carry out the new duties. Number 2, as the intent is to improve transparency of the city's finances, all meetings of the Finance and Audit Committee should be made available live and uploaded to the city's YouTube channel. 3, the Chair of the Committee should be required to report to the City Council during a regular session to ensure meeting items are accurately reported and made part of the record. 4, the City Council needs to focus its efforts on hiring a permanent Finance Director. Ending, I would also like to ask that you reschedule the public meeting to discuss the City Council's goals and objectives that has been canceled. Thank you. Next, speaker card, I would like to call up Bill Robinson, followed by Phil Kaufman, followed by Elsie Messman.
Bill Robinson, resident, have you missed me? I'm sad to inform the council that I'm certain that St. Poli will never be building the DDT Hotel atop the BKK toxic pile because it's a bad idea, sited amidst the city's biggest traffic jam, and the project won't survive environmental review because it violates highest and best use, land use principles. Number 1, we don't need another hotel in West Covina. Number 2, the idea has no constituency, no base of support, only a few ignorant stragglers. But according to two recent community meetings at Shadow Oak Park and Cortez Senior Center, nobody likes the idea. Residents gathered to present a long list of good ideas on how this property should be handled in the future. Hotels weren't mentioned. Long lists of very good ideas were presented. Most residents agree that some version of a natural, unspoiled, open space is the highest and best use for the BKK property, and the city's own land appraisal ratifies this conclusion. Finally, this plan will never survive the environmental review process, and if necessary, judicial review. That'll be Judge James Chalfont, Department 85, the Ritz Court at LA Superior. I hope we don't have to go there. Do I seem a little bit annoyed? The necessary conclusion is that a lot of unnecessary time and money will be wasted on this harebrained plan. Few will support the proposed new Roundup Hotel atop a toxic pile. My evidence for saying that is two well-attended community meetings. Again, you know, I keep repeating myself, and nobody stood up and said, "We need a hotel on the top deck." So, when will at least three of you get this message? It really doesn't matter how the council votes because I'm certain the project will never reach construction, construction stage in five or even 25 years. Switching gears, I'd like to discuss the West Covina's dire financial situation. No new taxes are needed, obviously, but the nine bargaining units are going to have to understand that residents are not in a financial situation to grant any pay raises to city staff for at least 10 years. We are just going to have to learn to live within our means, which means probably all the retirees and the staff and programs are going to have to learn to live on $85 million Residents can't get used to paying more and getting less. City Hall used to be open Monday through Friday. We used to get City Hall services, and now we're paying more and receiving less service. All five of you need to decide individually on the extent you will prostitute yourselves to the nine bargaining units instead of representing the residents that voted you into these chairs. The bargaining units don't run the city. You do. And I don't know whether everybody believes me when I say that. The nine bargaining units don't run the city. You do.
Good evening. The statement that was read from Mr. Chavez as to item number 21, I don't know him, but he said a lot of the things that I thought and I was planning to say, and I'll repeat a couple of them that I think are very important. I think the idea of diverting the duties of this council to a group of unelected volunteers is a grave mistake that could only lead to more problems down the line. Some of these proposed new duties of the Audit Committee, I think, are things that really should be closely examined before they're approved, things such as having the committee review financial and consulting contracts, to require the finance staff to prepare monthly reports. How much additional work is that going to be for the staff? And is there going to be a back and forth between the committee and the staff over what's in there, what isn't in there? What does this mean? What does that mean? Having the committee review projected revenue and expenditures to make sure if the council is informed of deviations, what are they going to do? Send letters? Send emails? Make appointments? Take up your time? How is that going to work? And also, to have them prepare quarterly reports, who's going to do the actual work? Who's going to be typing those reports and Xeroxing them? And how much extra time are they going to be required to do to prepare those reports? You're giving duties that are incumbent upon the council to, as I said, unelected volunteers. You're going to put a burden on those people, those people who will want to keep being members of such a committee, or if they don't, we're going to find more people who are going to take up those responsibilities and devote, I don't know how many hours a month, to working under these conditions and to complete all of these new tasks that item 21 seeks to add to their duties. And also, how much of a burden is this going to be on the Finance Department staff to comply with these statements and reports and additional duties that are being imposed on them? So, I think this needs to be very closely looked at before it's approved. I think each of these items needs to be individually considered in detail. And also, as to the budget, in the interest of the transparency that our community needs going forward with the upcoming budget process, I'd like to know when budget study sessions are scheduled, are going to be scheduled, so that the public will be aware in advance of when we need to be here to see what is being proposed, what our projections and revenues, expenses are going to be, and to keep a little closer eye on the whole procedure as opposed to the last few years when, you know, things, a lot of big surprises were provided to the community. I'd also just like to quickly mention on item 20, this new, what amounts to a tax being imposed on providers such as Charter. As a customer of Charter for both cable, TV, and internet, I'd like to know, is that going to be passed through the customers? If each customer is going to be, if Charter's going to have to pay the city a $5 or $10 fee for each customer, is that going to mean a $5 or $10 increase in our monthly fees? So, I think we need to know that, and that's something that needs to be discussed in public before you approve that measure as well.
Following Elsie Messman, I'd like to call up Jim Grivich, followed by Chris Miller, followed by Wenwen Zeng.
Mayor, council, staff, and everyone here tonight and at home. My name is Elsie Messman, a resident of West Covina for 46 and a half years. I'm going to speak on item 8, Maintenance District 4. On February 20, 2018, I requested a copy of the original document given to homeowners for the Maintenance District Number 4. On March 12, 2018, I received a letter that said, "In response to your public records request, per our Engineering Department, they do not have any of the records requested." The only thing we were told, we were told that we would pay for the passos, the sidewalks, the lights that the city paid for ahead of time when we moved into the area. Like I said before, the maintenance and passos, we are willing to pay for, but when we were charged for walls, graffiti, abatement, cleanup, bee removal, homeless shelters, when is this city going to stop? As a resident, we do not have a say in what we are being charged for, yet you want us to shop in West Covina and pay taxes, and then you're taking all of this, you're charging everything to us. And on checking the warrants list, I found it on Maintenance Division 4, Maintenance Department 4, $36,449 for a vacuum blower chain. Some of this is city equipment, so why are we paying for it? They also charged us $771 for pest control for six parks, and that was charged to our district. I have given, I don't know whether we've been given credit for these two items. I gave them to Mr. Freeland in July of last year. Then, per Mr. Hernandez's report, he states that $348.02 were for single dwelling and $464 for $464 for duplex only. And that's only two rates. There are nine rates in all for this, for this, for our part of the city. And then we are paying almost $204,000 for personnel service and another $103,000 for administration overhead. Someone needs to check into this maintenance districts, whether it's 2, 4, or 6, or 7. I feel the city is not treating us fairly, and whoever is coding these invoices needs to be more careful, as I have many more items that should be looked into. I hope you will listen to my complaint this time.
Jim Grivich, Chair of the Audit Committee. I'm here to speak in favor of item number 21. What you have before you is the recommendation of the entire Audit Committee, and I want to correct something that was said earlier. Three out of the six members who are presenting this to you are elected. Two of them are city council, and one is the elected city treasurer. The other three individuals, two of them are auditors, and the last one is a fiscal recovery expert. The purpose of this recommendation is to save our city financially. The city has had a practice in the last several years of essentially spending more money than it has received, which is called deficit spending. It has had a practice of spending more money than was budgeted in the original adopted budget by the city council, millions more than was budgeted. And it has also had a practice of misestimating revenue, so that the actual revenue received was significantly different than was originally budgeted. And coupled with that, in the last year, the city has had an absence of financial reports. So part of what's going on here with this committee is, in effect, a requirement that these reports be published and be reviewed, which is something that has not happened in the last year. The reason why it is being done at the committee level rather than the council level is because the council simply doesn't have the time to spend at each council meeting to review this information in detail, and the committee has the time and the expertise to do so. The council will receive a report quarterly on the financial status of the city from the chair of the committee. I'm currently the chair, but that'll be rotating relatively soon, so it'll be somebody else. But you get the idea that you'll know what's going on financially. I think it's extremely important that this city get a handle on the money situation. It'll be so easy for the city to go bankrupt. You may or may not be aware that the city is still on the list of the 10 most likely cities in the state of California to go bankrupt, and the primary reason for that is the enormous retirement costs relative to other cities and other agencies. I can talk about that in some detail at a later meeting, but it's a very serious issue, and it's going to be extremely difficult for the city to remove itself from this problem. I hope that the city council is comfortable with delegating these detailed tasks to two of its own members and the elected city treasurer and three volunteers, because the job needs to be done by somebody. Things haven't been being done correctly so far, and it needs oversight.
I am also, Chris Miller, I'm also in favor of Agenda Item 21. Basically, the council and the residents are mushrooms. We're kept in a dark place and fed less than desirable things. We haven't had a financial report since first quarter of 2018. We haven't had overtime reports. We haven't any kind of reports, other than, you know, what the budgets are and who knows what the actuals are. You know, I'm fully, I fully endorse the ideal of having people to be in oversight for the city in the best interests of the city and see what's going on. The next item, number 15, the purchase of police cars. You know, when I'm reading this, I think, has there been a study done on what type of police cars are the best for the city in both repair and durability? I mean, Crown Vics are, you know, one of the last full-frame cars. They're very durable, and they've lasted a long time. There's a YouTube channel called Cletus McFarlane where they've taken a Coyote motor and put it in. I'm sure if that's done on some of the Crown Vics we have currently, police officers probably wouldn't mind driving it for another five to 10 years. You know, questions come up. You have an Explorer, which is pretty much all we've been buying is a unibody car. Whenever they get in wrecks, it's a lot harder to fix than a frame-style car, you know, as opposed to a much bigger Tahoe or, you know, something of, I think that's only other frame car. But it'd be interesting to see what other cities pay in repair over time on different types of vehicles between Dodge, Ford, Chevy, you know, see what's a better vehicle for the city than just going with Ford. I know Ford was done in the past because of the relationship with the dealership and the repair, but that no longer exists. And then the next item is number 12 and 17. You've heard me speak about this before, and, you know, I'm worried about the light pollution, about the lighting levels, and just inundating our houses with a lot of light. I mean, right now, my backyard is lit up by the intersection lights in Vincent and Fuente. I can only imagine there's a light that's right out, you know, on the next street over that looks right into my kitchen. Are you going to be lighting my kitchen up at night now? So I think there needs to be the ability to adjust the cutoff angles on these lights so you don't cast other light in areas that you don't want, other than sidewalks or anything. And the other thing is dimmability of the lights, so that we can get the lighting level correct and not overlight areas. And that's pretty much it. Thank you.
Following the next speaker, I'd like to call up Bill Elliott, followed by John Schumaker.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, City Council members and staff, and the members of the community. My name is Wang Wenxian, and I'm the West Covina Library Manager. I have a good news for Los Angeles Dodgers baseball fans. The library will host a special storytime with Los Angeles Dodgers alumni next Tuesday, May the 14th, at 6 o'clock, 6 to 7. And children, attention, children, you are all invited to come and get autographs and photos and share a love of stories, love of reading and baseball with the whole family. So be sure to wear your Dodger blue. Well, the month of, the month of May is Asian Pacific Heritage Month. The library will host two programs to celebrate it, and we will have a children's dance performance by the Asian Arts and Arts Talent Foundation on Saturday, May 18th, at 3 o'clock. And this program is especially designed for children ages 5 and up. And so, okay, and well, we have another program for adults. We will have a sushi-making demo for adults on Saturday, May 25th. If you are interested in make, interested in how to, learning how to make California rose with authentic Japanese methods, please come join us at the library. Professional sushi chef Andy Mazuda from the California Sushi Chef Institute will teach you basic rose making and the fruit-cutting techniques. Samples will be available for tasting. So this event will begin at 2:00 P.M. Thank you for your time, and you all have a wonderful evening.
Good evening, City Council. Microphone's still terrible. My name is Bill Elliott. I am a longtime West Covina resident, dare I say, social activist. My organization is 1,135 people who love West Covina, love the Constitution, and advocate for concealed carry and the change of the old antiquated policies we've had in the city for decades that have denied the constitutional rights and the God-given right of self-protection by the residents of this city for a long time, since 1978. So I say that to say this, you know, we have, here we are again at the crossroads of selecting a new chief. It's probably already in the works. There's probably even a favorite son that's preferred. I don't know. I'm guessing. I know these things are very political. I don't know what the city manager has in mind. I don't know how much influence the city council has. I know that this is a pro-Second Amendment city council. As a matter of fact, I would venture to say that this city council that is pro-Second Amendment individually and collectively, please correct me if I'm wrong, is probably the precedent in Los Angeles County. I doubt that that is reflected in any other city government in the entire county. We already stand out for that, not to mention the resolution that still stands that redefines good cause as it applies to a concealed carry permit application, redefining good cause as simple self-defense of one's person, family, home, and business. Now, here we are, ready to select another chief. We have Acting Chief Bell, who is yet again at the helm of the city Police Department, and the wheels are turning, I'm sure, to select a new chief. And, you know, I'm six years into this issue with the city. The city council has almost completely changed. Matter of fact, I think it has completely changed since I first started speaking on this issue. The God-given right of self-protection belongs to all of us. If I smack you upside the head, you have a right to defend yourself. If I pull out a knife on you, you deserve to pull a gun on me. That's just, that's just a fact. But concealed carry, not only is a constitutional right, it is a civil right. It is a human right. Now, I have my detractors. We had Angie Jilling off last time I spoke, talked a lot of trash about me over the years. Dana Sykes brought in a toy gun, a simulated firearm, if you will, right here in the city council chambers, and lifted it up and said, "This is the only gun Bill Elliott should be trusted with." Now, if I walked into any school in the district with that same item, I'd probably have guns pointed at me. But the truth is, is that my detractors are advocating for a limit on our constitutional rights and our God-given right of self-protection. So here we are at the forefront, again, of choosing another chief, selecting another pool of candidates. Last time, after they gave us David Faulkner, and then we got a carbon copy of him and Mark Taylor, tyrannical, you know, just continuing to march in lockstep with the previous chief and the one before that, and the one before that, and the one before that. And the reasons I get told, you know, by people, they lean in and they go, "Well, this is Los Angeles County." That means nothing. It should make you guys want to support rights rather than limit them. So I don't know if Chief Bell is going to be given the helm of the Police Department. He looks pretty good in those four stars, wearing those four stars, but I don't know Chief Bell, and I don't know anybody the city's considering. He may be a great candidate. You know, I, my organization, the 1,100 people I'm standing here representing tonight who love West Covina, we're desirous of a dialogue with the police chief on this subject. We're desirous of a dialogue with the city manager on this subject, and we deserve to be heard. God bless this city council. You have a lot before you. The time is now, not tomorrow, not next week, not in six months. Now.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. By the way, speaking of bright lights, is there something you can do about that? Because when you're sitting there and you're at a certain angle, you know, you walk out and you can't see. I mean, you know, it's, it really is bad and distracting. Couple items. One of the things about BKK, by the way, I'm speaking for myself. I'm not like another person who represents and speaks for 108,000 other residents. I just speak for myself. We're not built, as far as I know, we're not building on the top deck. We're building on land that would be equivalent to like where the Heights is, that it hasn't, wasn't part of the dump. It was, you know, not, there's no trash underneath it. One of the things that I think is kind of interesting is when they talk about how all the residents are against it because of the dump. I've been involved in a lot of political campaigns over the years, and along with my daughter and family, we're, you know, part of the group that helped close BKK along with the city council. I was there and a lot of other people. And I find it absolutely astounding how many people don't even know there was a dump there. You know? The other item, and Elsie touched on it, is for many years, the maintenance districts had certain things that were charged to them. And a couple of years ago, it changed, and people have asked for the documents that says, "What was the original approved items that could be charged to the maintenance district?" Staff has refused to give it to us, period. Mayor Johnson asked for it a couple of times for me. I know Elsie's asked people, and you saw what she said. I think we need to go back and find out exactly, because I don't picture that for 30, 40 years, a very small amount of things were charged, and all of a sudden, "Oh, we can charge for these other 100 items." You know, it just strikes me, is somebody along the line, because we had pretty good people in that position would have figured it out 30, 40 years ago? The Finance Committee. You know, it's one of those things that it's as effective as the city council is effective. You know, Jessica, you came from a school district. They didn't have a Finance Committee, but then they also had competent finance people. You know, they also had competent leadership in the superintendent and things like that that went and put things through. You know, when I hear things like, you know, "I've worked in accounting and finance for 40 years." You know, I'm going to brag a little bit. I have a bachelor's. I have a master's. I'm a CPA. I'm a CMA. I've got all these initials after my name. And one of the things that I've seen, and I've been in hundreds of companies as a consultant, as an employee, whatever the case may be, every one of them had, even governmental agencies, had monthly financial reports that went out, and definitely had more detailed quarterly ones. We can't even get them out yearly. I mean, come on. And the ones who could not get those things out, you know what they had in common? Look at our city. Companies, private, public, whatever the case may be, same thing. Don't know how much money they had, when they had, and where it was being spent. One of the things you might want to look at that was stopped many, many years ago was the check register used to come to the city council for their review and approval. So they couldn't go, "Well, I didn't know they were spending all that money." Maybe you want to bring it back, because, you know, it coincided with that disappearing from the city council that our reserves and everything started to tank, because nobody was actually looking at it and saying, "Hey, well, there were people who were looking at it. They were just ignored." Finance staff, you know, that, part of our problems, that's the secret right there, is having good, competent staff, because they're going to put these things out. That's part of the everyday process. That's part of the everyday process of getting things out. You should never be surprised by anything, you know? And I can understand where you're going to run into things the way the state does things, that it's, you know, you're told one number, you have to make an assumption, or it's going to be a range that you can be off. I'll never fault anybody for being off on that, because sometimes it is a best guess. But when you say you're going to spend $69 million, you spent 62 or 63 or vice versa, that's inexcusable, because you know how much you spent. And one last item, how things have already changed. Two or three years ago, there was a flag problem at Walmarado Park. Two or three years ago, there was a flag problem at Walmarado Park. I complained, I say, "We need it taken care of." Even Lloyd Johnson, I called him and said, "Hey, can you help me?" And he goes, "Yeah, John, I'll, certainly. I want a flag repaired." And he got all over city staff. It took about five weeks. We had the same problem at Cortez Park. You know, Mr. Castellanos brought it up to the new interim city manager, and instead of taking five weeks, I believe it took about five hours to replace the flag. When you do the little things right, you get the big things right. So thank you.
Final speaker is JD.
Good evening. My question's real simple. I'd just like to see if we can get an update on the property adjacent to Lark Island Park. I know we paid a pretty penny for it. It's tied into additional parking for the neighborhood to avoid patrons to the high school, as well as their tenants, as well as those that visit the park from parking over in front of our, the residents' homes, which is just a few of us surrounding the immediate park area and the high school. So I was hoping maybe this interim city manager can provide an update and let us know if there's plans for that property. Are we going to continue to rent it? Are we in the rental business? Because Freeland, it's been probably a year plus, maybe close to two years that it was purchased. I think excessively high price for what the mark, real estate market was back then, but that's neither here nor there. My concern tonight is for additional parking. Ms. Schumaker was kind enough to explain the development over at the high school, but it really didn't answer my concern, which is additional parking. So if city manager, if not tonight, sometime in the near future, provide the, me as a resident, maybe other residents are concerned with an update, it would be greatly appreciated. Thank you for listening.
That concludes our speakers.
Mr. City Manager, do you have any comments, anything that was brought up?
Thank you, Mayor. Listening carefully to all the speakers, like to thank them all for being here tonight, and was taking careful notes. I'd like to address a couple of those right now, if I may, just because I think they were asking questions that are on, a lot of minds might be, several people interested in all of these topics. Mr. Robinson asked about City Hall being open Monday through Friday. I'm interested in that as well, and I know the council is. It's a seemingly simple thing to change, but the city has to meet and confer with all of its nine labor groups in order to make that change. And so when we do get around to getting the budget numbers together and presented and agreed upon, we'll turn to that one. Mr. Kaufman expressed concerns about the Finance Committee, and I know that's a new entity, and we're going to do our best to support it with the, with the data and the information that they need. Elsie, I apologize, I didn't get her last name. She also was requesting data about the maintenance districts, and we'll get her, what she's requesting in terms of the historical documents. If I can find those, I'll put those in her hands. Mr. Gervich, apologize if I'm not getting these name rights, wants to stop deficit spending and misestimating of revenue. I couldn't agree more. Number five, Mr. Miller supports Item 21, supports Item 15, and had questions about vehicles, which I'm not prepared to answer tonight, but I'll be happy to research in terms of life cycle costing of the police cars. You'll have to guide me, Council. Am I doing this correctly? Because I'm not used to this procedure. Okay, thanks. I appreciate the library manager being here tonight and knowing about those events. If there's any way the city can help publicize those on its website, et cetera, I'd be happy to see if we could do that, because it's always great that we can encourage people to read and be literate. Mr. Elliott asked for a new microphone. Okay, see what we can do to improve the sound. I know at the last meeting, we had a gentleman request assisted hearing device, and we were able to provide that for him tonight, so. Oh, and the lights. Thank you. We'll see if those can be dimmed down. I don't know what kind of lights those are, but we'll get into that. Mr. Schumaker had a lot of comments. I think the gist of it was that he thinks the Finance Committee will be effective if the council supports it. Wants monthly reports, wants quarterly reports, wants sound angel budgets, and I agree. Number nine, JD, and I didn't get the last name, requested an update on the property next to Lark Island Park, and I have no information about that tonight, but I'll research it and respond. I think that's all I've got. Thank you. Oh, thank you, the SCE lights, that's an item on your agenda tonight. We brought it forward mainly as an energy-saving and money-saving technique. It affects all the Edison on streetlights, and by the council's approval of an agreement, there'd be savings of about $65,000 a year. We're at a moment in our budget preparation where we're addressing any efficiency and economy measures we can find in the budget. It's probably the municipal equivalent of looking for quarters under couch cushions, but to me, $65,000 is a significant saving. That's why I placed it on your agenda for you to consider. In talking about the light intensity question with the Edison people, in addition to saving energy and saving money, these new light emitting diode lights, they're going to go with a standard GE fixture, and the cost per to install is about $300. They're much fancier, they're much more effective, and we have concerns about them being too bright. And so what the Edison people agreed is that they would be willing to agree that the light intensity would be about 3,000 Kelvin, which is a measure of light intensity that is low enough that it doesn't affect people's sleep and melatonin. And so by using a standard GE fixture, they think it won't be too right, too bright, but they are able to, in some instances, provide directional lights and shielding if it proves to be a problem. That's the one complaint I've heard in these light conversions, is that, gee, it's great to save money, and gee, it's great that the lights are brighter, but we don't want to be able to read the newspaper at midnight. So we're aware of that, and we're working with Edison on it. And I think that's all I've got tonight. Thank you.
Great. Now, before we move into our consent calendar, I do have one adjournment motion, so I, Councilman Castellanos.
Just so make sure we don't forget, and to pay proper homage, I would like to, just to let everyone know that I'd like to adjourn today's meeting in honor of Mr. Robert Hills, who passed away on April 20th. He was a 45-year resident and part of three generations of West Covina family, and also the grandfather of our elected city clerk, Nick Lewis. And please, that's why I'm asking to adjourn in his honor today. Thank you.
Assistant City Clerk, please take that note and send out a notice for the city council, please.
Will do.
Okay, now we shall move to the consent calendar, and we have 19 items, and there's something you're not going to hear very often. We're not pulling any of them. So, no, no, so do I have, do I have a motion to accept the consent calendar?
I'll move.
Have a second?
I'll second.
Second.
We have a motion, a second. We have a roll call, please.
I'm sorry, who made the second?
Ladies.
Okay. Councilman Castellanos?
Aye.
Councilwoman Lopez Viato?
Aye.
Councilmember Schumaker?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Wu?
Aye.
Mayor Johnson?
Aye.
Passage 5-0. Now we should go into public hearing. This time, it's a, it's a public hearing on zone change number 19-01. This matter is set for the public hearing. It consists of, the city intends a zone change from single-family residential R1 to multifamily residential MF20 for property located at 1904 West Pacific Lane, where the city clerk verified a properly given notice has been given.
Verified.
Okay, now this public hearing will now be opened, and there will first be a presentation of the staff report, then they shall hear from the, those in favor, and then project, and then those who oppose. Mr. City Manager, who shall give the report?
Thank you. If I was going to go that fast, I'd wear my tennis shoes, but... This is a zone change hearing for a zone change from R1 to MF20 for the property at 1904 West Pacific Lane. Terms of background, on October 2nd, 2018, there was a public hearing here before the city council for a property just west of the subject property on Pacific Lane. And at that meeting, it was, it was discussed that this, this one property at 1904 was the only one on that block that was still zoned R1. The other properties were all zoned MF20 or commercial. And I'll show you a map in a second to show you that. So at that time, there was some discussion about initiating a code amendment to change this property. So on February 5th, 2019, the city council initiated that zone change. On March 12th, 2019, the planning commission held a study session to discuss the situation, and then, and directed staff to go forward with a public hearing on April 9th, 2019, at which time the planning commission discussed and gave, made a decision, which I will cover in just a minute. So this is a map of the, the area. Pacific Lane is an east-west street that comes off Pacific Avenue, which goes up into Baldwin Park. You can see the, the one light green-colored lot that is just under the end of Pacific Lane is the one lot we're talking about. The darker green-colored lots are zoned MF20, which is multifamily, I'm sorry, multifamily, 20 units to the acre. And we have a photo in a second, but you'll see that the ones to the south and to the east of that lot are developed with a three-story condominium, probably in the 70s. The one lot on the corner of Pacific Lane and Pacific Avenue, it's a triangular-shaped lot, is actually a commercially zoned property that is developed as a small shopping center. And the lot to the south, where North Orange is there, the southern part of this is also commercially developed office building. So this is pictures of the site, that the, one on the top is the picture of the subject property, the house, and you can see to the left of that, to the east of that, there's three-story condominiums, and you can sort of see behind the house that they're, they're there as well. To the right side of the house is a single-family property. There's two single-family properties, both of which are zoned currently multifamily, 20 units to the acre. On the, the lower picture is a picture across the street, and across the street to the north is all single-family properties, pretty much for the next mile or so, up till you get to San Bernardino Avenue and the industrial zones up there. The planning commission held a public hearing on April 9th, 2019. The property owner, Peggy Hale, was in attendance and spoke in support of the zone change. At the conclusion of the hearing, the planning commission voted 4-0 to recommend approval of the zone change to the city council, so that's why we're here tonight. The site is surrounded on three sides by multifamily 20 units to the acre zoning, so it's consistent with the neighboring zoning designations. The zone change is consistent with the general plan designation, which allows up to 20 units per acre of residential development, and the proposal is a general exemption from SEQA per the section cited on the screen behind me per the SEQA guidelines. So that concludes staff's presentation. I'll be happy to answer any questions at this point.
Any questions? No, I guess we don't have any. I guess we're happy with it. Okay, we have any, oh, okay, thank you, Jeff. Do we have any open discussion on it? If not, before we vote on it, I'd just like to make a little, a little comment.
Was there a public comment?
No, oh, I'm sorry. I do apologize. Is there any public comment? Seeing none, I shall close the public comment. Thank you. That's what I look forward for you to do, make sure I stay on course. I do, like you said, make a little comment. Back in 1975, I was planning on buying that house, right there. That's before the condos were built. The condos were built right after that. I'm glad we didn't buy it, because that's what we would have had, had all those condos. No, it's, so it was born '75 or '76 when the condos were built in that area. So I don't have a problem with this, because all the other ones on that same side of the street are already zoned for this. So I think it's the only logical thing is to make this the only one. Now, if I'd owned it then, I'd be sending some money right now, because I'd want to change girlfriend. I'd rezonate. No, anyway, that was the only comment. Okay, now that, any other comment?
I'll add to that. I'll say, you know, it makes perfect sense. It would actually not make sense to leave it the way it is, as it is surrounded by MF20, so I don't see why we wouldn't do this. Thank you, Mayor.
Do we have a motion then?
Make a motion to approve, please.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and second? Roll call, please.
Councilman Castellanos?
Aye.
Councilwoman Lopez Viato?
Aye.
Councilmember Schumaker?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Wu?
Aye.
Mayor Johnson?
Aye. Passage 5-0. Our next number, I, 20, is a departmental, departmental regular matters. City manager, it's a proposed urgency ordinance, an ordinance establishing a public educational and governmental fee. Mr. City Manager, who will give this?
Number 20. Departmental matters.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Good evening. This concerns a PEG, which is the public educational and governmental fee that pertains to cable television services in the community. Prior to 2006 in California, local municipalities had the ability under state law to let independent cable franchises, and in turn, were promised a lot of really amazing tools to help reach out to the local community. The cable companies would pay for local origination studios, they would pay for operators to do community programming. That landscape changed in California in 2006. State legislature took that power away from cities and placed it in the hands of the Public Utilities Commission, left in place an opportunity for cities to buy ordinance, like the one we're asking you to consider tonight, left in place this ability for a council to collect from the cable company a PEG fee. By so adopting, the rates that residents pay doesn't go up. They'll pay the same rates whether the council adopts this or not, but it's a source of revenue that could be important for the city and that could be spent for these specific purposes. For that reason, we're recommending that you adopt this ordinance on two bases tonight. One, as an urgency ordinance, so it would take effect immediately, we could begin to collect that revenue. Again, we're looking for revenue as we head into the coming fiscal year. And secondly, as a normal ordinance, so that if the urgency ordinance got challenged, somebody said, in fact, it wasn't an urgency, by the time the ordinance is given first and second reading, you'd be in a sound legal position. With that, we're available to answer any questions you may have.
Is there any questions? Yes.
Okay, I have a cable service. Okay, I have a so-called a bundle, meaning I have internet, cable, and a phone service, so meaning, so they charge one, my leg or my arm, so it's pretty expensive, okay? And right now, I don't even have the time to watch cable due to, okay, so busy doing all this so-called non-paying job. But, but my point is this, okay, I think this is, okay, they should do something, because they charge so much money to our resident, okay? And they, I don't think they, any service to our, okay, community, for example, the gas company, they will come do something, our trash company will do something, and even water company, right now, they want to kind of partner with city, they want to, okay, basically, okay, donate some of the charity, this and that. So, so we have a lot of utility company try to help out, okay, because they make money from us, at the same time, they want to kind of come back, okay, give back to the community. So, so what this cable company, they, they can do for us? So, so what I'm saying is, maybe you can answer why we don't have any representative over here, due to, okay, a lot of people subscribe, okay, all this, okay, charter cable or spectrum, and they change their name, so meaning they, they're pretty lucrative for their business, so maybe they should do something. But again, for this, what you propose, I just don't want to, okay, and increase the subscribers, okay? They have a cable service, and their fee will increase. So this is, I want to make sure, okay, this is not going to impact about their, their fee. Okay, I, I have no problem if I have to pay more, but I'm talking about for general public, it's not fair for them to pay more if we are going to charge, okay, then for some kind of franchise fee.
Staff agrees complete. I'm going to ask the city attorney, who deserves credit for this item, to, to explain.
So the PEG fee is not technically a tax. It's not even, so actually, what ends up happening is this is an obligation of charter rather than obligation of the subscriber. So what a lot of people are familiar with is, say, sales tax, which is ultimately essentially collected by the person you buy it from, and then by, they have a legal obligation to collect it from whoever does the purchasing. That's different than here. This is a direct obligation of charter. Now, they have a legal right to put it on the bill and say, "Oh, by the way, we're paying this fee," but they do not have the obligation to pass it through. So whether they choose to pass it through or not is ultimately their choice. So whether they choose to pass it through or not is ultimately their choice. So now, what some, quite often, what ends up happening is that it is listed on the fee, but the question is, is it a direct, will they add it on automatically? Or do they say, well, actually, strategically, I don't want to, because, again, I'm increasing my price now competitively. Cable companies have to pay the PEG fee, but DBS providers, such as DirecTV, because they're not using our streets, the legislature, essentially, they've concluded that they don't have to pay. So in one sense, they're paying as they go, so to speak. That's also related to the franchise fee. And I should point out that this is only on gross revenues of relating to cable. So it wouldn't affect, if you have a bundle, in your example, it would not affect the cost of the telephone bill or those other fees that are unrelated to the cable service.
So second following question would be, so if we charge them this, okay, entitlement, so how much we can collect annually, or we do it monthly, annually? So how much the city can make this money to kind of, okay, help our revenue?
Yes. So the PEG fee in this proposed ordinance would be 1%. That is the amount that honestly, the overwhelming majority of cities have a PEG fee. And so at any rate, it would be 1% of the gross revenue. So roughly speak, so we know that in the last couple of years, based on the amount of franchise fees that are collected, and that's a 5% rate, so we can calculate with a fair amount of certainty that it's going to be in the range of $168,000 per year, plus or minus, let's say, $10,000.
I'd like to be clear, too. This money has to be spent for these defined purposes. And so I know our priority is to put public safety in the streets. And I can just hear the unspoken question, can I buy a police officer with this money? And the answer is no. But we can use this money for all of these PEG purposes. General fund money, which is now being used for those purposes, would be freed up. So I see this as a win for the upcoming budget cycle, which we all expect will be difficult to balance.
When you say $160,000, what kind of purpose you can use? Can you give me a little bit more detail?
So federal law allows PEG fees to be used for capital costs, and that's a defined term, capital costs related to the provision of PEG programming. So for example, we've heard tonight, we want new microphones. That could be one example of something that would be used to, that you could use PEG funding for. For example, if you need to upgrade the connection line to, you know, if you've got technology issues that you need to use, you could use it for that as well.
I have another idea. One purpose we might be able to put it for, we've already been in communication with one of the providers of these municipal apps, where citizens can turn in graffiti and all kinds of problems. If we're able to amend this slightly, such that council meetings, et cetera, are broadcast or available through this tool, that would be PEG-eligible. So there might be a number of ways we haven't even thought of yet, that this money could be used very effectively to make available all of these PEG purposes.
And do we have any communication channel with cable company? Our Channel 3 cable to broadcast, our meeting is horrible, okay? Sometimes you don't have the sound, sometimes you can just jiggle in, okay? So, and I think this has been a repetition problem, we've been asking so many times, okay? I think this is so-called transparent, okay? We need to have, a lot of people have a cable, okay? They don't have internet. So hopefully, we can request them to, the big cable company, if I can now provide a little bit better quality of our meeting.
Yeah, so we've been in negotiations with them to deal with exactly those issues. And certainly, if you use PEG funding, you could use it to upgrade the infrastructure relating to exactly that.
But the issue there is, one way we're negotiating with charter and saying, give us a piece of what our residents pay you, with PEG, ultimately, let's be real, they're just going to pass it through. Whether they call it the PEG fee, whether they raise rates, $2 a month on those using, you know, their cable, it is going to be imposed on our residents. So, I mean, I personally do not see the urgency for this. I would like a better idea of where this money would come from and a further discussion with the community that, hey, if we do this, likelihood is, you're going to pay it, but are these things worth it to you? Versus what maybe we can negotiate with them now, which they'll probably slide right into their balance sheet anyway and charge again for their overhead costs. Either way, we're going to pay, but at least one way, it's upfront.
Okay, $160,000 income, okay? And my point is this, okay? If we can get extra money for the city to pay for our service, I don't know, okay, you say they maybe not, they will raise the cable, okay, and the subscriber their fee, okay? I don't want to give them excuses. We only get $160,000, and they will raise a dollar per household or something, and then, and now they make more money, okay? So this is something, okay, I don't know, how can we? But again, they raise my fee all the time, okay? I see my cable fee continue to going up, like no tomorrow. So I, I don't have the time right now, but before, when I have the time, I call them, I say, hey, how you increase your fee? He said, how about you reduce one phone line, and you reduce some of your cable channel? Then I say, how about I reduce everything? I don't even subscribe. So the thing is this, okay, then they negotiate, they give me a little bit better rate. So sometimes negotiation, okay, is we work. But so at the same time, I don't mind we charge our entitlement, but at the same time, I don't want the subscriber, they get, okay, gouged or charged, because they feel like they have to give $160,000, they may be charging subscriber some extra money, okay? And do we, can we say, okay, this is our entitlement charge, you have to pay us, but you cannot raise, okay, our resident for their cable service? I don't know, is that possible?
We could certainly ask them not to raise their rates, but they have the right to charge whatever the market will bear. Presumably, right now, frankly, they're charging as much as the market will bear. The question is, would they see this as an excuse to say, you know what, actually, we can charge just a little bit more? And then ultimately, that's a judgment call.
So have we talked to their rep?
No, but I would doubt that the individual rep has the authority to change pricing. It's usually done on a larger scale. But have not spoken with them about whether this would directly affect their pricing.
Maybe we should, just to have something on record about that.
If I may, I'd like to hold this over and see if we can get somebody from charter to come down here and give us a full explanation. We could sit here and guess at it all we want. I know I don't have charter. I mean, I have Verizon with all of my stuff. But I'm just saying, I think for the residents that do have charter packages, I think they need to know the overall, what it's going to cost them. If it's going to cost them a dollar a month, it's going to cost them $5 a month. I think the residents have a right to know what charter has in plan. And then as a council, we can decide on it then. So myself, I'd like to hold this over and see if we can get someone from charter to come over and give us an explanation.
Well, I don't think we need an explanation from them. I think we just need to direct staff to contact them and say, we are contemplating imposing this fee. How do you handle it? Will you use it as a pass-through and just get the answers? And also talk...
I suspect that they will, because...
They'll say no, I'm sure.
They will, no, they'll say, of course we will, because they don't want to have to pay the fee. So they'll say, we're going to pass it through. Regardless of whether they will or not, they're going to tell you they're going to pass it through, because they want, they don't want to have to pay the fee.
They don't want to pay.
They don't want to pay, so they're going to say, oh, let's threaten the residents. We're going to increase the fee. That's what they'll say.
Counsel, I recognize we may need some more work on this one and to answer your questions. If you'll just refer this back to staff, we'll try and get those questions answered for you, and we'll return. Yes, sir.
Okay, so the motions, have a bring it back?
And I have another comment that probably can't be said in public.
Okay, so, I have a motion, have a bring it back?
I'll second that, Mr. Mayor.
So we have a motion and a second, we have a roll call, please.
Councilman Castellanos?
Aye.
Councilwoman Lopez Viado?
Aye.
Councilmember Shoemaker?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Wu?
Aye.
Mayor Johnson?
Aye, passage 5-0. And now is the time that we're having the AB 1234 conference meetings report back from any of the council members? Oh, that's after that. Please, I know where I'm going on this one. Thank you. Listen, one time, I'm right.
Mayor, 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 if you would allow me, the city attorney has asked me to read ordinance regarding the zone change into the record, by title only. An ordinance of the city council of the city of West Covina, California, approving zone change number 19-01 to change the zoning for the property at 1904 West Pacific Lane from single-family residential R1 to multiple-family 20, MF20. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, did we have any of the AB 1234's report? Seeing none, now we should go to item number 21. This is amending the duties of the audit committee. Mr. Mayor Pro Tem, Tony Wu, please.
I want to pass to maybe state report about this finding.
Well, can maybe Dari or I discuss it since we're... Sorry.
I think what we can do, if I may, Councilwoman Shoemaker, is have this given, and then you guys can give your reports, too. We're more than happy to.
Okay, because the two of us will be the best responses to some of the comments made tonight.
Okay. You don't have a follow? You're up.
Okay, so this item was brought up, actually, at my first council meeting, to change the audit committee to the Audit and Finance Committee. One thing I want to point out is, the audit committee did discuss this. Mr. Castellanos and I did have input, and we did make changes that we thought kind of went a step too far into what should be solely the council's purview. A couple of the items mentioned by community members, I would like to point out, are current duties of the audit committee. They're not something new. And so I think it's important to note that. And another important thing is, this does not take our duties away. It does not delegate our authority away. Mr. Castellanos has asked pretty much every time he's sat at this council table, and the budget has been discussed, for the monthly reports. So the council will still be giving the monthly reports. It's an extra set of eyes on monthly reports. It's an extra set of eyes on quarterly reports. It's an extra set of eyes on the budget process and revenues and expenditures. You know, no one in City Hall and no one sitting at this council table is infallible. There may be something we missed that the audit committee will catch. There may be something that we don't know as a council, because we may not have the necessary expertise, that somebody on the audit committee can catch. It's just like any other committee in the city, where the planning commission, Mr. Redholtz is here, approved the zone change. We expect that when the recommendation comes to the council, that our commissioners and our staff have gone through everything and have reached the correct conclusion according to law. Does that mean we can't say you're wrong and we're not going to do it? No. It's the same with the Audit and Finance Committee. The number-one job we have right now is figuring out our budget numbers, getting our reports on time, making sure we know what's going on, so that we can provide the services we need to. And so the changes to the committee are necessary and needed. And we did look at the fact that this isn't, these directives aren't because of what's going on now, but what the Audit and Finance Committee should be 10 years from now, when we're not here. So it's not a response to now, it's a response to what we need and what we should have. And so I voted for this change, and the recommended changes at the audit committee, and I'm in support of it tonight.
And I want to follow, okay, and Councilwoman Shoemaker, regarding why, okay, I think it's kind of important, okay, and for our, okay, city or city council, and have another set of eye. And the three and a half years I sit over here, okay, and work with budget, okay, and it's extremely frustrating, okay? And I think, okay, since we have a new city manager, a new finance director, I hope this is a good team. But you're just here like four, five weeks. So this is something that, okay, been accumulated for such a long time, three and a half years of surprise, okay? We always, at the end, okay, over June or something, we got something of a deficit. And we never prepare. And before that, we asked the previous city manager, and he told us, everything's fine. Okay, so that is the trust, okay, worthy that is gone. So that's why, this is something important, okay? We need to have a set of committee, kind of, okay, help us, okay, to go to the monthly. And I think this is what required by the law, too. We have a monthly payment, monthly expenditure. And the quarterly, they should be, okay, transparent to the side, our website, to see, why is this and that? So the resident can see what's the taxpayer's money go to, okay, where's the spending and this and that? And we need a number behind the numbers, so everything is right there. So with that, I think we can have a much more, okay, and the normal, so-called normalized system, okay? We have to build this system. Okay, this system is, we, our spending has to be, okay, matched of monthly and quarterly. I don't think they will increase, okay, our staff time, and due to why? Due to this is already in our accountant, and we have staff input into the system, and that should be automatically compute and give to the, our audit, our finance, okay, committee, and they talk up to us. We, five-person, a part, so-called part-time, and we have to deal with entire city, okay, thing, everything. So in that way, it's quite impossible, we have know everything in detail. It's impossible, I think you know it, okay? And so we need some extra audit, professional auditor, two or three of them, okay? And we have two city council, okay? And over there, they are all professional, too, with their specialized background. And, okay, Castellanos, Councilman Castellanos is, okay, in the major, in the master degree in finance, and I think same thing, too. Okay, our, okay, Councilwoman Shoemaker, okay, and with a school board background and doing the excellent job. I think this is, we can create a very good team to help the city and help the staff to make sure our finance, our budget in place. So I'm 100% support this thing, and I think good people make sure with a good team, and make our finance, okay, normalized and healthy. Okay, so anyway, this is my recommendation.
Councilman Castellanos?
Won't make it too long, but to follow up with Councilmember Shoemaker and Mayor Pro Tem Wu, we had even some comments today from the public that demonstrate why we need this expansion and assistance, Ms. Messman and Mr. Shoemaker. So without making it too long, we think we've got plenty of reasons to move in this direction. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
I turned my mic on, I didn't want to say something. You know what? There was an old saying, sometimes says, if it's not broken, don't fix it. This is broken. You know, we've, residents have been saying we need more transparency, more transparency. You know, these are volunteers. These are residents in West Covina that take their time out, they want to make the city better. They don't want us going down the same path we've always gone down. So I've read everything about this, I do understand it, and I think we need to do this now. This is the right time, the right time, for this to go into place. Who knows? Maybe five, 10 years down the road, we get ourselves back where we want to. Maybe you can cut back a little bit. Maybe the residents will say, you know what? I'm spending zillions of hours on this, I would like to cut back a little bit. But until then, I think this is the right time for this, and I will support it myself. Yes, please.
Just one more thing I forgot to mention, or maybe, I don't feel I made it clear. This should not cause any more work to the finance department, because new requirements, like the monthly reports, are things that we should be getting anyway as a council. And so it's not anything additional that they have to do. It's the group that will receive it will be bigger. And so I want to address that concern specifically, especially since one of the people that commented happens to work in the finance department. And so I want to make that very clear, is the expectation is not that the audit committee is now the overseers of the finance department. It's there another set of eyes for the council for documents that we should be receiving anyway.
And before we vote on it, one last thing is that, for those who really don't realize it, this council does have the final say-so. Whatever brought from the audit committee, we agree with them, or we disagree with them, or we say, we would like to have a little bit more explanation why you came up with those numbers. So I'm 100% for this. So let's, I have a roll call, please.
Do we have a motion?
And so, bring back with, is it mother may I?
No, no. A motion to approve?
Oh, make a motion approve?
Motion to approve.
Almost goofed up again. Okay, we have a motion, we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, roll call, please.
Sorry, Councilman Castellanos?
Aye.
Councilwoman Lopez Viado?
Aye.
Councilmember Shoemaker?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Wu?
Aye.
Mayor Johnson?
Aye, passage 5-0, do we have any mother may I's in the future? Councilman Castellanos?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and our resident JD must have been reading my mind earlier, because the comment you made, Mr. JD, is related to my mother may I, I would like to request city staff to provide us, and the residents, an update of not only that property, but all of our current contracts for lease or sale of land, such as Queen of the Valley, City Yard, the aforementioned Lark Island, and any and all, and as much as possible, post-information on the website, and for the council, monthly reports, please, thank you.
Okay, since that's just a mother may I, if there's no other further comments, I make a motion to adjourn.
Second?
Okay, we are adjourned at, oh my goodness, nine, that's at 8:35, wow.